Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to Reno County Commission Regular Session Meeting for Tuesday, May 31st. Start the, do we normally do it? Normally call, nevermind, sorry. We'll call that to order and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer by Jerry Ginni.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we print? Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given to us, for the cooler temps, for the moisture. We're grateful for this country in which we live and as we pause to remember over the weekend, yesterday especially, those who paid the ultimate price in giving their lives so that we could enjoy the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans. We're grateful for their sacrifice. Grateful for those who serve us in this chamber and out in our county. Pray for your watchful eye over each of them, those who look out for us to keep us safe. Pray for wisdom and discernment in this chamber and the proceedings that take place here today and the impact that those will have upon the citizens of our community. I ask all of this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. You're very welcome. Okay, we have number three welcome given, everyone here today. I always appreciate Commissioner Hurst's comments related to events like Memorial Day and I asked him maybe if he could say a few words about Memorial Day in Reno County.
I had the privilege, I guess I could say an honor, to be able to attend the Memorial Day service down at South Hutchinson at the Reno County Memorial. I'd like to thank the Hutchinson Symphony Brass Quintet for their participation on such a windy, windy day. We had to huddle up behind the different things, so protect a little bit by the wind. But nonetheless, I really appreciate their, they made it kind of special, really special. And just the recognition of our military people, both Gold Star members past, those other past and present military. And we're fortunate enough to have some of our military personnel, whether they're still in the Guards or Reserves, as well as their past experience, to be able to serve with Reno County. So as a whole, I thank everyone for the putting this programs together for what we used to be called Decoration Day and has changed to Memorial Day.
Commissioner Hurst, certainly that we appreciate all of the current and past veterans of Reno County and all of their sacrifice for our community. Randy had a couple of updates on the agenda. Randy, did you want to speak on those?
Yes, one item, and I'll ask Adam Wysher to discuss that, but the Fire Mitigation Assistant Grant, that there was an email received late last week after the agenda was put together. I've asked Adam to come up, talk to see if the commission is interested in applying for this grant. There's a short deadline. And then an executive session for attorney-client, 15 minutes at the end of the meeting.
Before we set the agenda, is there anyone here for public comment now on the agenda this morning? Okay, hearing none. Sounds like we can add, let's see. Let's add the fire item at 7B. Is that okay?
7C.
Let's do 7B, just so we can.
Okay.
I think the Health Department probably has a fairly robust update. If we can put him ahead of that, that would be good. And then the executive session would, you want to do that after comments?
Yes.
Okay. So nine, nine and a half, if you will. Does that sound good?
I would move we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen.
Okay, consent agenda is fairly long this morning. Randy, did you have anything to highlight?
No, but we do have in the audience, in case they want to mention it, Levi, about the radios for Pratt County Sheriff's Office. And then just to highlight also the ARCAT Service and Operation Hours, those have been approved, as in the packet mentioned, by KDOT, but those are based on staff shortages to be able to do the bus routes. And then the Reno Harvey County Joint Fire District Tender Truck Purchase for Moscow Tank, that came in right before the agenda went out, so, but they do have the money in there, reserved to pay for that.
Commissioners have questions?
Well, I'll move that we approve the agenda, consent agenda.
Motion approved.
I will second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Hurst.
I appreciate the information that was given out to allow us to make those decisions.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes, I've got a couple of question and comment. 6D on the, no, 6C on the appointments to the Juvenile Corrections Board. Did those go to the chair before they came to us? I think we had a, did we have a commission discussion that we wanted to be notified of those prior to final decisions being made on county?
I think the policy was the 90 days, we publicly advertise and then, yes, let commission know if there are any selections. This was the only, these were the only applicants.
Okay, well, not to dwell on the subject, but I guess maybe I misunderstood what our policy was going to be, is that after the 90 days, the applicants come in and then the commission's to be made aware of who the applicants are before they're formally presented to us. Did I misunderstand what we approved?
I'm not, I'm not sure. But I think that...
And I'm not questioning the applicants before's today, but I'm questioning in the procedure that we approved, that by going to the 90 days, I thought we were giving enough time so that the commission was allowed the opportunity to see who is being vetted for those positions, so that if there's any comments by the commission, those can be made before the formal nominations. Either of you two, Ron says he doesn't remember, but I thought you made a point of this, didn't you, Daniel?
Yeah, I made a point of it. I think the point is a little moot when there's only enough applicants to fill the seats. But, you know, I guess this brings up another comment. I think City Hutch just recently did this, is they put all of their advisory boards on the same time of the year, so it's just one review and then one call for volunteers. Did they actually do that, were they talking about it, you know?
I saw that they discussed it, but I don't know if there was a decision at the city. For Community Corrections and the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, those are by statute and I don't know if they're, I'd have to look, I think March, April's usually the time that they do those. All the other boards that we have are usually in January. So this fall, we would put out, look at what openings we have across the county and advertise those.
I think your point, Commissioner Sellers, is valid. I didn't do a great job of vetting it myself before it got on here, but given the limited applications, I didn't spend a lot of time on it either.
And again, I'm not questioning any of the people that applied and is being recommended.
Yeah, I'm not either.
I just think that we ought to follow the same procedure for all groups that are part of the county boards and advisory groups.
Well, how about this, given, it doesn't sound like there's any concern with the actual appointments, that we put it as a separate item back to you, Randy, next meeting, you could just kind of give us some feedback on where we're at as far as the policy goes.
That's fine. I'll bring back the policy that I had, that you guys approved and see what it says.
It is, make sure that it is always put on the website. Plenty of time for people to apply, to show interest.
Yeah, I think that's our goal here, is to get a wider group of representation where possible, so that makes sense.
To meet the qualifications necessary for that position.
Well, my second is not a question, but a comment on 6K, the ARCAT Service Operation Hours. All of our county departments have been stressed by a shortage of personnel and to my knowledge, this is the only group that's had to change their operations due to shortage of people. And I would hope that we do anything and everything possible to get them back to their normal service hours. It's always seemed like to me that ARCAT decides when they want to work and when they don't want to work. But I understand the shortage of personnel, but I hope that this is a very short situation so that we go back to normal hours. A lot of people have come to me in the past few months about their usage and their need for that service and I'm convinced that it's a service that we need, should be providing, but we need to do the best that we can do. Thank you.
Mr. Hurst, do you have anything else?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item seven, business items, 7A's courthouse repairs update. Randy, do you want to kick this off?
Sure. So at a previous commission meeting, the commissioners were presented with a couple of change, two change orders, one for the dome, for the base layer of the dome, and then anchoring of the stones on the interior between the facade and the structure. The commission approved the dome repairs, that change order. We were hoping to hear back from insurance. Insurance is not covering that full amount. We don't know how much they will cover of that $900,000, I think it was $920,000. So the county will be on the hook for that additional amount, but insurance does not cover. Today's is an update that Harland was going to give about the anchoring. That was the other change order. Again, insurance will not cover this. The anchoring of the building, and Harland can get into more details of how that works, was there's corrosion, rust on the anchors that hold the stones in place. The concern that we have, the engineers, our architects are concerned that if we have more earthquakes, that those could cause, I guess, a collapse of the stones. So they're recommending, they had recommended that $700,000 anchoring change order, which I believe in Harland, can you explain, was it just the, we were talking about that this morning, just the top couple floors that that change order would cover? So we've talked with the architect and engineers. They're recommending to do something, that we do some anchoring system, not just leave it as is. We wanted to first update the commission on this and then see if the, we don't have an exact number, so we can't ask you to approve 700, 800,000, 500, we don't have a number for you to approve. But with the next meeting being June 14th, we wanted to, at least if we could get consent, our ideas, if the commission's, what your interest is in moving forward with an anchoring system, or do we leave it as is? And finish the rest of the courthouse project and bring this back in a future year. The agenda packet does show that we do have, we do have funds to cover this. This is our reserve fund. Part of that would take away some of the money maybe for the courthouse renovation interior project, but at the current time, there is reserve money that is available to take care of this anchoring change order, if you guys want to do that. So Harland, can you explain some of the details I missed on that?
Yeah, so I know you've been given a lot of information about this over the last month or so, so I don't necessarily want to go back and take a lot of time going over the details, but in essence, the limestone slabs that are on the outside of the building were originally anchored to one degree or another with steel ties that go back to the structure of the building. And at least some of those ties have corroded and rusted and either are no longer there or are no longer doing any good. So the, you know, that was something that was discovered once they got the dome completely off of there and they could see down between the facade and the interior structure. That was submitted to the insurance company as part of our earthquake claim, although we never really asserted that the problem was caused by the earthquake, but some of the stones may have moved that might not have otherwise if the ties were still in good condition. The insurance company has, like Randy said, denied coverage on that. The report that their second engineer sent out recently basically said their conclusion was that it survived the earthquakes and therefore we don't really need to do anything. We're not required by code necessarily to do anything with it. And the reason for that is that there are exceptions within the International Building Code for Historic Buildings. Otherwise, if it wasn't for that exception, we would be required to do that. I included the response from our engineer, Brent England, locally here, his response to their report, basically in a nutshell says, may not be required, but we believe it should be anchored for the long-term viability of the building. I don't know that there's as much concern about actual collapse as there would be with continued seismic activity that jostles that building over time. There's a cumulative effect on the mortar joints and we could have a lot more mortar joint failures and issues like that, which could cause a lot more expense related to future maintenance going forward. All of that is speculative, of course. The engineer from WJE, which was hired by the insurance company, provided data that said the projection for the next earthquake of that, the magnitude that we had is over 2,000 years out. Normally, building codes would be based on, requirements in the building code would be based on about 25% of that, which would be 500 years out. I spoke with Adam Wysher, Emergency Management Director, and what he's hearing is, that's not what they're projecting for us. They're projecting more earthquakes. So, you know, it's speculation at best. But at this point, the recommendation from our local architect and engineer is that we re-anchor those stones, but the degree of that is still somewhat in question. I have asked them to give us some input on the viability of anchoring only the stones that can be fastened directly to solid concrete, which would anchor a grid of stones around that tower, but not necessarily every single stone in between the concrete grid. Those stones in the middle would have to be anchored back to hollow clay tile, which is kind of like a flower pot. To me, I really question the cost versus benefit of anchoring, you know, several hundred pound stones to a hollow clay tile. But I'm not an engineer and that's why we have folks like that hired, is to provide solid input on that process. So that's the question that I'm waiting on an answer for right now, is some analysis and recommendation about whether we could get our, the most bang for our buck by anchoring only the stones that could be anchored directly to concrete. That would reduce the cost significantly as well as the time to complete the work. The other question that I'm waiting on an answer for is, this particular recommendation is anchoring the stones on the tower from this third floor up. That doesn't address any of the stones around the larger exterior of the building from the second floor down. So, you know, I don't want to spend $700 and anchor the tower and then have a recommendation next year that we need to anchor all the rest of the stones around the entire building. So those are the two big questions that we're waiting on at this point. And with that, I think I would stand for questions.
Harland, explain to me, you furnished a lot of information on this in our packets and what the public can see and view. Change Order Two was for what, for $698,000?
That was to anchor the facade.
Okay, so that's a quote?
Yes.
And Change Order Three is the one that we approved?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
It's for the dome, it's for the base.
Yes.
That's the concrete base in the dome and is proceeding with. So we have a number to do this top?
We have a number to do the entire thing, including every stone, 2,300 anchors.
But you're saying that in your opinion, and I understand what you're saying, it'd be better to anchor the ones to the concrete than to the tile?
That's what I would like to have an answer on before I'm, you know, we make a final recommendation or a final decision. I don't see spending an extra $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 to anchor to something that's not terribly substantial if there's no, if the benefit isn't really there to justify that. If it is, then I think that's the way to go, but I really want our engineer to weigh in on that.
And this method that's being considered is actually to drill the stones and anchor from these drill holes to the concrete behind?
Yes.
I know my thoughts, but I'd like to hear, and maybe it's not fair, but other questions from the commission before I give my thoughts.
I haven't given any information as to why we should anchor to the clay, open clay tile. To me, that just doesn't make as much sense as what I would think. Anchor to something solid, you don't anchor to something that can break and fall away.
I think part of the challenge here is there's multiple things going on. Is this a request for approval or an update?
It's a little bit of a both. We wanted to update, answer any questions, but then let you know if you wanted to move forward with this. It'd be nice to have some direction, you know, maybe a maximum of what you guys are willing to spend as we're trying to get a better price and look at alternatives.
For the anchoring?
Yes.
That's Change Order Two. Well, let's talk about that first. Harland, what, so, I mean, on the, on the report here, it says that the contractor presented a proposal for these anchors. What's the engineer say?
The engineer approved their proposal as they submitted it.
But why, so the theory is there's going to be future earthquakes and this would prevent what happened previously from happening again?
Or minimize that risk.
And the building's been there for?
Ninety years.
It's never been anchored previously.
It was anchored originally to some degree.
Okay. Are we talking about all, I'm sorry, I'm still getting up to speed, are we talking about all the bricks around the whole building or are we just talking about the dome?
So the proposal is to anchor all the stones around the tower, which is that center section leading up to the dome. And that, my question, one of my questions to the architect and engineer is, if we do that now, are we also going to have to do the second floor down, all the way around that building at some point? And if that's the case, then that's another huge expense that the county would be looking at at some point. Now, at this point, the tower, they, I believe they're saying is the, that's the highest risk of damage, because the higher you go, the more shaking there is.
So is, what guarantee do we have that if we do this, is there a level of protection we get, like?
That's a good question. And that's one that I think our design team is, you know, trying to do their best to, I guess, cover the worst-case scenario as best as possible, but there really is no guarantee. I think what they've told me is, is that the additional stabilization and work that we're doing on the dome should withstand another earthquake similar to what we had in the past. If we get one stronger than that, I think all bets are off.
Does this include replacing anchors that are existing that are in bad shape? If we just did that, would that be a different scope of work?
The problem is, there's really no way to inspect the anchors that are down lower in the structure, because there's no way to get to them without removing the stones from the outside, which is a huge, well, I mean, you really can't do that. So I think what they're basing this on is, is based on what they have been able to see. We did drill some holes in some areas from the inside and stuck cameras in there between the interior and that outside facade to see what we could find. That during that exercise, it was determined there was not nearly as many anchors to begin with as what they would have expected. But there's only limited places that we can really get in there to inspect without doing a lot of demolition, which then results in a lot of additional repairs to, from the demolition, just to explore that. So the recommendation is to just go in and put all new anchors in, sort of disregarding what was there to begin with. That was the recommendation from the contractor.
Can you clarify whether this is some sort of structural deficiency or if it's aesthetic or like? or like, is this something that needs to happen because if it doesn't, the building could be compromised? Or is it just, well, blocks may shift over time, and that doesn't look great?
I think it's some of both.
I don't feel like, and I know this is a complicated topic, I don't feel like I have enough information to know what we're doing and why.
And we knew coming in that we may not have all the answers, but we wanted to give an update of where we're at, knowing that your next meeting's not until June 14th. And we're looking, did they say how long now this would be if we approved it, or if the commission approved it?
As far as the construction?
Yeah.
Several months, anyway. The hope was to get this done, and, you know, by the time they get done with that dome, and then they can be out of here, and we can move on to other things.
So, the Change Order Request Number Two, $698,000, is to do every stone from the third floor up? And what you're saying, and I tend to agree with, there's no sense in doing it to the ones that go to tile. So what you're going to bring back to us is something less than that?
That would be, that would be the hope?
Well, I'll listen to it. But personally, I think we need to get Pisni done with what we've given him to do. And I don't see this as an emergency, and that we ought to think long and hard before we spend additional money on this at this point in time. But if it's something less than the $698,000, I'll at least listen to a quote.
Would agree with you.
You know, Pisni's been here too long. It's gone on and on and on. And I'm not willing to, at this point, increase what we're dealing, doing with them.
Would this be a project that would be bid out again?
I don't know. I just think that it's not an emergency. I think we've had too long a relationship with Pisni, and I'm ready to get done with what they're contracted to do.
The information I have so far, and I'm not, I don't know whether I have the ability to digest everything that was put here with not being any type of engineer, but to me, I still stand by what I said earlier, that we only look at anchoring to anything solid and not anything like the clay tile.
Randy, it feels like there's not a great appetite here to spend more money on the courthouse without something like an engineer coming in and saying, "We need this for the structural integrity of the building."
Well, your local engineer said that.
We're also waiting on an alternative. So, that was one of the things we didn't have, is the, Harland had asked for the grid system. So, if we have that, and it's significant less, we can bring that back at a future meeting to see if there's the appetite to.
Well, maybe we need the engineer here, because I don't know that it's clear to me whether this is like a structural integrity issue, or a, you know, kind of would like to have it, or an aesthetic issue. Like, if the building's going to fall down on the next earthquake, I think it's clear what we need to do. But I'm not clear on what we're doing and why.
Isn't this, the idea of anchoring this, kind of hedging the bet and making sure that you don't have to go back in and re-tuck and re-point everything with the next 4.2 or whatever? Is that, would that be a fair idea?
Yeah, there, you know, I think there's a good chance if we had a 4.2, there would probably be more tuck pointing to do. That is pretty violent shaking.
Well, then...
But if we have these little ones that are just barely perceptible, I think that's where they're saying, over time, those would tend to damage mortar joints as well.
That would let more water in over time.
More water in over time.
So if we anchor these, if you go in and anchor the main ones, the ones back to concrete, is that going to substantially save any future water movement into the drought points?
That's the answer I want to hear from the engineer.
Okay.
Well, the insurance carrier, you would think would want to do that if it's going to prevent a claim in the future. I mean, if they don't want to do that, then there just may be a claim in the future for that. I don't know why we should.
Another conversation that should be had.
Okay.
So, you have what you need?
That was part of the, yes, we have what we need to move forward.
Do we need to talk about the dome?
Not that I know of. They are making good progress there. The rest of the materials that they needed for the shoring and the form work inside the dome are supposed to be there today, or tomorrow at the latest. And then, at that point, they can get the rest of that done. They've made a lot of progress so far getting prepped for that. So, I think, you know, I've been pleased with the productivity and the amount of work they've gotten done in the last few weeks.
How much more do we have to do on the window project?
That is wrapping up. They spent all weekend, including Memorial Day, working in the Division Two courtroom on those windows. And there was some framing modifications that needed to happen in there as well. But they got a lot done there, too. So, they're still telling us their projection is to be out of the interior by the end of June.
So, on the insurance claim, where are we at? Are we accepting what they've said?
We've gone back and forth with them. We've tried to debate what they should cover. I believe the last thing they said was, and Harland, correct me, they would cover putting it back the way it was, which we need to now work with them to figure out what that cost is out of the $900,000. Is that $100,000, $300,000? We don't know. We are still working on that number.
And the concrete cap is done. Will that pretty well ensure that we won't have water damage coming in on that fifth floor like we had before?
Yeah, that's, that was a big part of the reason why we did this, I guess.
Randy, when do you think we'll have clarity on what the difference is between $0 and $900,000?
With the insurance company and that. I'm not sure, Harland, have you heard?
I have not. Pisni's working on a cost from their end. And then, I will contact the insurance company here this week and see. I know they were going to do some calculations on their end to come up with what they thought it should cost. We'll see how that compares with what Pisni is estimating, and then go from there. But I would think within the next couple of weeks, we should have that information.
Well, I still think we need to push hard on getting a large portion of that back from the insurance carrier. I mean, seems like somebody's wrong here. And I don't think either side's fully proven their case yet. So, $900,000 is enough to argue for a while. So, will you put that in your reports, just to keep us updated? Anything else on this, Commissioners? Okay. 7B, we moved up a quick report here from Emergency Management, Adam Weishaar, on a request.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Weishaar, Emergency Management Director. Back on March a bit, we received a fire management assistant grant, or FMAG, for a cottonwood complex fire. And that FMAG, what that allows us to do is qualify for reimbursements for all suppression activities. We're still calculating costs, but we're north of $500,000 on that. So since we met our individual threshold of $239,000, what that means is we now qualify for mitigation money. That mitigation money comes on the heels of our FMAG suppression activities. We don't know how much mitigation money is available, but we have to submit a letter of intent to the state if we want to utilize any of it by June 10th. The scope of the projects are for communities, schools, counties, and fire departments. And it's a 75-25 cost share, meaning the federal government pays 75%, and the county would pick up 25% of that. Some of the eligible projects include fireproofing or fire resistance of homes, roofing, siding, exterior doors, dual-pane windows with aluminum frames. Utilities also qualify, so that means replacing wooden poles with non-flammable steel or construction poles, shielding and power cables, replacing water tanks with non-combusible tanks. Other things that qualify include creating defensible spaces around homes and other areas within two miles of an eligible home. You can create some defensible space there. Non-eligible projects include creation of fire breaks or clean-cutting areas, prescribed burning, or equipment. So we cannot purchase any equipment to make this happen. So before I get...
Would you go back, you said you can't do fire breaks, but before that, you said something about another mitigation method that was. What's the difference?
So you can create, I don't know what the difference is. You can create a defendable space within two miles of a home, but it specifically says in there that you cannot create a fire break.
Or cut down trees.
So, there's about probably 200 pages of FEMA guidelines here. And when you really get into it, it's, to me, it's focusing more on individual homeowners and private property. They want to get you close to that home, have you sign an agreement with an individual property owner, and create a defensible space. In my opinion, it's not looking at creating those large fire breaks like we would want the county, or encouraging prescribed burning. I have this little graph here that talks about wildfire projects, the application complexity, environmental complexity, and legal complexity. And if we get into defensible space, it's high on complexity application, it's medium on environmental complexity, medium on legal. But once we start getting into fuel reduction on private property, it becomes a high-complexity application, high-complexity environmental, and then high-complexity legal. And I can provide that graph to the commission as well. So we really don't have a lot of information to move forward. Before we start going down the path, I want to see if there's an appetite for the commission, if there's going to be any sort of cost share on behalf of the county to get onto private property and assist with the fuel mitigation.
When's the application due?
July, or June 10th.
The complex application?
June 10th. What it talks about on high-complexity application, says mitigation activities are technically complex, requiring multiple source documentation, support the benefit of cost analysis, scope work, budget, and/or schedule. Also residential products, projects with multiple private property owners participate require greater documentation oversight from application to implementation.
Is this, is June 10th the full application, or is it just an indication that?
And the state's not clear on that. I don't think we have time to put together a full application. If there is interest from the commission, what I would want to put together is just identify the high-fire-density areas of our county and say, "We're interested in creating some sort of project here," and scope that however the commission wants. If that's fuel reduction, if that's building materials, scope it that way, and not get into the individual property owners until we know how much money is available and if we may or may not be approved.
Do we have to commit to a dollar amount?
I don't think we have to commit to necessarily a dollar amount, but I think we need to have an understanding that it could cost us, seeing if it came out of money if we're going to touch a lot of residents.
Well, I won't be bashful. I don't think that that's our government's role. I think that's the individual responsibility. And I think that needs to be also part of the insurance role with regarding the individual responsibility. I think if, you know, we're all paying for the 75% regardless. And if the tax, if an individual wants to pay that 25%, then that's fine. But I don't think it's our county's responsibility to fill an individual. I just have problems with using taxpayers' money in a specific area rather than just all over the whole county. I did before, and if that's, and if the commission decides otherwise, I would only consider it with Kansas Forest Service directly involved with that. So, does that make it plain on where I stand?
So you're suggesting that we not apply for the grant? Is that what you said?
Only if the individual property owner wants to pay that 25%. And I don't know we have enough time to figure that out.
Chairman, I think that it's impossible to provide a legitimate request by June 10th, and I think we should not go forward with the request.
Well, this, so, I'm just reading this, and this says, they're asking for an LOI, which generally means like a letter of intent. Says it only needs to be in the form of a document that tells us who, what, when, where, why, and how of the project. I don't think they're asking for a full application. And I would guess we would still have an opportunity to decline, you know, if they came back. So, I don't know that the risks are very high to just send a one-page document and what our ideas are.
It'd be up to the commission. I don't think it would take a lot of effort on our part to put together a letter of intent and scope a project, where I think the real work would come in is identifying the individual property owners that would participate.
I mean, the point I kind of disagree with you, Commissioner Hurst, is you're paying for it on the back end, too, with all this emergency response. And I think that's a lot more expensive, actually, than the actual mitigation, even if it does have to happen a little bit on private individuals. Like, there's obviously not a great incentive right now for them to do anything, and there's nothing of great consequence if they don't. And so they don't. And then there's issues like what we experienced, where one person died and 35 homes were lost. And that's because we haven't mitigated the risk. And we're paying for all of that in emergency costs, which are probably 10 times more over time than mitigation costs. So, I don't, I agree with you. Like, we don't want to spend money making people take care of their own property. At the same time, I don't want to spend money, I don't want Adam having to spend money fixing up the mess either.
I see your point.
So, I don't like it on either direction, but I'd rather fix it before it happens.
So you're asking Adam to send a brief letter of intent and see if that gets us through this June 10th deadline?
I think he should write up something creative that goes after as much funding as he can go after. And then we take it back here, and if we don't want to pony up or find a way to have the landowners pay for it, then we say no. But we don't have enough to say no to, I think, at this point. Or if we feel like there's any risk, to ask.
You understand what he's asking you to do?
If we did create a letter of intent, I would need to know where you wanted it scoped. Do you want it scoped into building materials, or my recommendation would be scoping into fuel mitigation, defensible space for property owners.
The second is my preferred.
I wouldn't go beyond that.
I go wide on that, you know, we need to be creative. But we might get participation from landowners. You never know.
As far as I'm concerned, just hinges on that.
So it doesn't seem like there's, nobody's saying no to putting in an LOI. Is that right?
From what I know now... From what I know now, yeah, but I think it still hinges on not using taxpayers' money, individual homeowners, yeah, and that would be...now, would this be in a specific area or would be county-wide?
So my goal when I submit the letter of intent, the Forest Services Creative Maps are not public yet, to show all the high-risk areas in the county. I want to incorporate their maps into that LOI, that letter of intent, and submit that to the state, showing that anyone who's in that high-risk area could qualify for this. What we would have to get into is if it has to be a county project where the county picks up that 25% or if we can spread that cost share onto our citizens at that 25%. So there's more information to come, but if we do that LOI, we can actually open the door and try to learn some more information.
I know Mayor Moore said they're working on a lot of that with Highlands. You probably got that now, and that's been going back to the individuals and where it should be.
So did you ask him how much is, they said there's a pot of money?
They don't have a dollar amount for us. I also asked if there's anyone in the state of Kansas who's completed one of these projects successfully. They said Clark County has reached out to their emergency manager. She's currently out with some surgery issues, but as soon as she gets back in the office, I'm going to just try to see how they scope their project and maybe do one similar to what they did since they were approved.
Well, I'd go ahead and make a motion to authorize the emergency management director to write and submit a letter of intent for the FMAG grant to be further reviewed, or if we, if, who is this through?
This is through the state, so the state will be the applicant, and then the state will pass money over to us.
A final decision to be pending based on the state's response to our LOI. Does that sound good?
Second.
Okay. Any final discussion?
No.
Nope. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. I'd ask one question, please. And the LOI, that can be approved or not approved based upon our commission, right? Once it's submitted?
That's correct. The LOI doesn't lock us into anything at all, it just says we're interested.
I understand. Thank you.
All right. Reno County Health Department, annual update.
Monica Fisher, Paralyticals, Director of Public Health. I have with me our Assistant Director of Clinical Services here, Karen Hammersmith, and then our Assistant Director of Population Services, which is Megan Gotchak, and also Bethany Jansen, who's our Fiscal Specialist. If there's any questions I can answer, they are here to help me. Our point on here, do we have to come back?
Yeah, just, I'll use the mouse. Just scroll down, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. So the very first slide, I won't go through all the slides in detail, but the very first slide, the reason I wanted to bring this up is supportive of our, which will be a slide, a couple of slides. One thing, of course, that Reno County is working on is our mission and values for Reno County, and then how that implements or how that interacts or touches each one of our county departments. So one of our, so some of the individuals that Megan supervises, which is our Population Services side, which is our health education, part of their quality assurance, performance improvement projects, was talking to different staff in the Health Department on what we do, and it's more or less educating those in the other, in the Health Department and other county organizations, county departments, on what the Health Department does do. So this is just a word explosion as far as some of the things that we do, and this is from staff in the department, just to kind of a little bit of an education. And then this is another reason as far as why we do it, and probably the biggest thing is making a difference, helping people. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention. One of the biggest things that I wanted to thank you commissioners about is your assistance on the strategic direction for the departments of the county, specifically the Health Department. So what you guys helped support was a new mission and values for Reno County, and that has been adopted by the Health Department. So updated on February of 2022. Over the course of six months, the elected officials and staff worked together in a series of workshops to create a new strategic plan, defining the organization's values, developing a mission, identifying key performance areas and establish priorities. This is our foundation for the Health Department. Another one is our community health assessment that we just finished completing. On that community health assessment, which we did do a press release on, it is also on our website. If you go to therenocounty.gov, go to the Health Department on the right-hand side, you will see a lot of our dashboards, and also there is a website for the community health assessment, the results of the community health assessment, to help educate the community on the assessment of Reno County and issues that we need to focus on. That's the importance of the population health services side of the Health Department, is they work together with other community organizations on trying to moving some of these measures, working together to try to make an impact in Reno County. So those results, the overall concerns for Reno County included substance and drug use, childcare, and mental health. The top three health concerns for Reno County from this health assessment was drug substance misuse, mental health, and obesity. So then we're using a lot of these foundations to then create a new strategic plan for the Health Department on trying to help Reno County citizens. So I just wanted to bring that to top of mind for you. So our staff is our greatest resources. I just wanted to, I just provided some information for you guys on staff, where we are on our full-time equivalent staffing, and then how we are funded at the Health Department. And then what we've done the past year, I won't go through this in great detail, but of course, us, like everyone else, our life was adjusted, our day-to-day activities were adjusted because of COVID-19 demands and our response to leading that for Reno County. Went through also our public health services, and this is, of course, education to you on the different areas, what they focus on and what they do. And also our population health services for environmental health, our licensed childcare, and then our backbone for the Health Department, our admin and fiscal services staff. Our completed projects for '21 and '22 so far, along with normal operations, we did provide leadership in the COVID-19 response. Staff completed training for us to become a trauma-informed community by completing the ACES, which is Adverse Childhood Experiences Training. We worked with KDHE to combat a HE outbreak in the community. We teamed up with the Reno County Wellness Program by offering a walk with ease program to Reno County employees. We implemented a peer monitoring program with the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas. And then part of our OOE grant, Drug Court, was launched in Harvey County. Because of the efforts of Reno County staff, the Kansas Board of EMS now has an API feed into OD MAP, making Kansas the first Midwest state to be fully online. We completed grant requirements for three federal grants, which is the WIC, RRIOE, the COVID-19, and then nine state grants, which is a state formula, our licensed childcare, CDRR, OD2A, COVID-19, FP, our immunization practices, maternal child health, and our preparedness. We did become accredited by the Public Health Accreditation Board. We have implemented a new EMR, which is CureOD. We've completed an overdose trend in Reno County report. The information in this report has been used at overdose conferences locally and nationally as an example of what a small county is doing to make progress on difficult issues. And we have completed the Community Health Assessment, which was in conjunction with United Way, Hutch Regional Medical Center, Prairie Star, and other community organizations in Reno County. And then upcoming in 2022, 2023, was again completing a lot of those normal grant requirements that we have, thank goodness, through the state of Kansas and federal government, maintain our accreditation for the Public Health Accreditation Board. A lot of this is what we would do anyway. It focuses on quality assurance, performance improvement, taking little processes, making sure that we're doing this correctly, and look at ways to improve constantly in the services that we offer, how we offer those services. Use and become proficient in the use of our new EMR, full implementation of GeoPermit software for our environmental health clients. What we want to do is have more everything, have more services, more information online, so people have to make less phone calls, or so we have information more readily available to Reno County residents. And then also then to complete our Community Health Improvement Plan from our Community Health Assessment. And I wanted again to say thank you for your support in the mission that we do. So I will stand for any questions.
Yes, Carla, thank you for your report. One of the items that you had on your report of accomplishments from last year was working with licensing childcare. As you know, it appears that this commission is going to make a significant commitment to helping fund childcare in Reno County in the short term with COVID funds and all. Can you or your staff that's with you today tell us that you're being cooperative in any way and every way that you can to make these childcare daycare centers work?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that is our role. So for our licensed childcare, we, of course, are surveyors for the state of Kansas. So anything that we follow, anything that we do is a direct flow from KDHE, because that's where we, we are surveyors for them. So anything that anybody questions, again, we go back to our regulations for childcare and we go back to KDHE. We are very supportive. Again, we have to follow those regulations. So if there's any issues, any problems, any questions as far as those regulations, we do refer them to KDHE, because that's where those regulations come from. We just simply implement those regulations. We do not make the regulations. We cannot speak to those regulations. We then help centers follow those organizations and help them understand this is what this means. We do have several guides as far as when they become, and flyers for how to become initially certified, and then how to maintain that annual requirement. Anything else I should add? Sure, Ms. Darcy, come on up. Ms. Darcy oversees our childcare, licensing childcare division.
Morning, Commissioner Darcy, Reno County Health Department. We've also updated the website to create a parent portal as well. A lot of times we feel like the parents have a tendency to be left out on some discussions about good providers or where to provide care. So we've also created a section on the website for parents to look at, too. We have created a whole section as well for resources for childcare providers to keep up on their education, to find their forms, to also look for their own audit checklist that they could use to prepare for surveys as well. So there's been a lot of information we put out on the website, and we have been promoting that with both Reno County, and we also do Harvey County facilities as well. Routinely, we keep an email list, so we can always blast them with useful information or updates from the state. So that stuff is occurring frequently. Increased communication has really been more robust, I would say.
How do you let the parents know about this, the website?
We often attend, like, we get the young child or when parents call. So let me elaborate a little bit more. There are, like, Third Thursday is a place where communities can go or organizations can go and meet and just talk about what they do. When parents also call in, we let them know about resources that are on our website. If they question, like, where can I find a provider, what can I find out where my provider surveys have been like in the past, that's also public record and can be researched. So we direct them a lot that way.
Is there something that a childcare provider could hand to any, both prospective and those who are, so they know a little more rather than just going to the website or knowing, calling you or anything? Is there something that could be handed out directly to any prospective person wanting childcare, as well as those folks that are already having childcare, that inform them, you can go to this, and this is our phone number, and et cetera?
You mean something that a parent could receive from?
Something that a childcare provider could give to a perspective?
To a parent?
Yes.
Oh, okay, right. So childcare providers also could have their own surveys if they wanted to hand out their information or if they are also...
I'm talking about survey.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about just getting the information, where to find this information.
We could make a handout for them that they could say that here's a resource for you. We could also work on more social media boosting. We have seen great success with doing social media and pushes for parents and involvement, so we could easily work on something like that.
So when we talk about childcare laws, there's been a lot of feedback that they seem awfully stringent and draconian and counter to their benefits. Do we, are we the inspector enforcer for those rules?
We are. We are their eyes and ears for KDHE. Reno County does not have their own set of childcare regulations. When we accept the grant, we accept that we will educate and see those regulations are followed through with our providers and report it to KDHE. KDHE reviews the surveys, and they determine any type of follow-up that will occur, you know, whether it be a follow-up in five days, or if you want to appeal, anything that's been wrote, that is all directed to KDHE. The local level doesn't have any control over any of that enforcement or making of the laws.
But we're the ones going out and looking?
Correct.
Saying, you have to do this, you have to do that.
Right. We will say this is what the regulation is, this is how it's interpreted. The state trains the staff, as a matter of fact, on, so they do a lot of the training. The state will come out and help childcare licensing survey staff as well, too.
And what would happen if we just didn't want the grant anymore?
So if you didn't want to have the grant anymore, you would be cutting positions, people would be losing, you know, you have some staff members that would lose their jobs. The local facilities would lose a local contact. I think some of that personal local contact would not be there anymore. They would have to go straight to KDHE. There could possibly be a delay in that. KDHE would then have to find the resources to have somebody out here as well to do those surveys. You keep in mind that regulations for childcare are very much about safety for children, health of the children while in those facilities.
Well, I don't think you're going to get any argument here that we want our kids to be safe.
Sure.
I think Commissioner Hurst, you've mentioned rules that don't appear to fall in that category.
And thank you for bringing that up, and we've had a little discussion about that. And I'm not, I'll throw something out just as an idea, that maybe if we had a list of things that, let's just, I don't know, let's pick on something, a couple of things, a step that's one inch too low or too high. Is there some variation that can be given? I know you have to follow the rules and regulations, we all understand.
Sure.
But is there a list of things, like maybe the lumens in a room are two lumens less? Is that really a safety factor or not? If we had a list of these little things that could give some leeway or conversations about or some way to mitigate some things that aren't costing a childcare provider thousands of dollars, that maybe when we could go to the state, and you can, Carla's already given me a name, that we can contact up there if they're still there, and maybe we could go up and actually have a conversation directly with the state on that. Would that be something that would make a little bit of sense? I know you have to follow the regs, but is there some way that we can say, okay, you've got two weeks to correct this, or something like that, or a month, or it's really not a real hazard, but our rules say this has to be done? But is there some way that we could kind of work in the system to give a provider time? Our biggest problem with childcare right now that I see is... Our biggest problem with childcare right now that I see is, is not having, it costs so much to do this and fixed costs are just part of not only the variable cost, it's a fixed cost involved. And I know that's why one community years ago didn't put in one because of the high cost to, to develop the regulations, which it seems like safety's changed a lot since we were growing up, okay? And we're not going to get into that, but, but I just wondered if that's something that we could utilize to get a list of these little things that how do we mitigate this so that we both can stay within the safety realm as well as, as make it efficient and cost effective for that provider?
Sure. Childcare providers do have the ability to contact KDHE regarding your, like a specific regulation that they have been cited for and reach out to them and request an exception or provide, you know, some explanation of how they need a delay or a lengthening for a correction. So they are more than welcome to do that. That handout is provided on annual surveys and initials routinely to do that. Staff do report trends to KDHE about frequent violations or what they're seeing or complaints and that type of thing. So it is an open line of communication all the time to the state, even through providers. Providers are more than welcome to reach out to the state and, and request some variances or some exceptions.
What's been your result with that?
It varies. If it's a true safety issue like a SIDS or a sleeping issue, there's probably not going to be a lot, you know, a lot of wiggle room. There are, you know, some pretty intense safety guidelines that the state will more than likely not budge on. But if somebody definitely needs some variability in time and reaching out and trying to get something corrected and they stay in communication with the state, those have been well. So I would just encourage that communication as well if we could.
Are we, are we the entity that issues the citations?
We go out and we cite on a survey what the violations were and it's reported on the survey form and then is reviewed with the applicant while they are there on site as well. And then they have, KDHE has a standard depending on what the violation is, so many days of correction before staff can come out. They also do pay attention to when violations are corrected onsite during the survey. So we do go out, we cite the violations, we see the violations, we're in communication with the state if we need to be actually during the survey. And then they have to educate them on what the law is or what the regulation is. It is then submitted to KDHE. KDHE then determines the enforcement action and the timeframes. The staff do not do that.
So is this, is this a requirement that we have or do we get this responsibility because we have the grant?
Correct.
So we get a grant and then we go police everybody in the county and?
That is correct.
And we do that work for?
With the state, for KDHE, for two counties. We actually do it Reno and Harvey.
We didn't have that though, the state would have sent someone.
Yes.
So if I could speak to that for just one moment, one of the reasons why we, we actually, sorry, I'm Bethany, I do the finance part. The state's going to find, the state's going to find someone to do it. That's one of the reasons why we have a Harvey County part of it, is that the state is going to have someone to do it. For Central County, they actually have a separate entity that does it. There's no way around the regulation enforcement. It's just whether or not we're the participants that get to have the actionable part of it, which means we get to be part of the county being part of it, hearing this and actually have an active, an active participation with it. If it wasn't us, they'd find either another county that was willing to take that fund and, and regulate, regulate the grant, or they'd find another entity that was willing to do it.
Yeah, that makes sense. Do we advocate for the daycare provider when we feel like, well, like Commissioner Hurst's point, like this, this isn't a material issue, like we want to advocate for not having to? Because I heard like, and I hear this a little too much from the department, oh, somebody else's rules, you know, our hands are tied, like we have to add value somewhere in that and like to just like kick the can, I don't think we're adding any value for that. But do we advocate for our residents when we feel like, you know, maybe something isn't fair? Or do we just say that's the rule?
Right, I understand what you're saying. So there are times, I've been on surveys with staff on some very large facilities where something staff thought maybe the state should look at it at a different eye and think about how it's wrote on their license may not necessarily be, how it's applying within the facility. So staff have, I've seen that on sites, I've been there with those discussions with the state where they're running this just a little bit different, could it not just kind of work just this way? You know, nobody's getting hurt. And so those discussions are, you know, are being had while they're actually on those sites.
I wanted to follow up on that point. So something else that you brought up, I agree, it is our point to advocate, it is our point to educate. We've created flyers for facilities. This is what to expect on your initial survey. This is what to expect on your, on your annual survey. We want them to succeed. We want to be there with them. We created the flyers, the state uses our flyers. We created handouts for centers. The state uses our handouts. We do want to support them. We do want them to succeed. We have developed that for those centers so they do succeed. So yes, we want to back them.
I just like, and I'm, I'm not necessarily pointing any fingers, it's just it gets a little, makes me a little nervous how integrated we are into the system that we're complaining about. And so like it seems like we have an opportunity to make that better just because we're part of the system.
And that's our continued communication, like our contact, like Jennifer at the state, hey, we're seeing this, hey, we're seeing this, hey, we need this from you, we need this support from you and we need your consistent backing so we all are successful and consistent in our message going forward.
But you've got the feedback from childcare providers, from that group, like you, you've heard that, like all of the things that they think are challenging, like do you, do you know that, plugged into that?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you part of those conversations?
Yes.
You're like the, like the childcare stuff, you guys are right in the middle of that grant work.
Yes.
Okay.
Explain to all of us the difference between a home care and a qualification for a home care provider. Are you ready for that yet or can you do that at another time?
That would need to be done at another?
Just briefly.
Okay.
Briefly overview, 25, 40,000?
It'll be a very big leap for me as well because I'm not an actual surveyor with the state. So there are, for a home, there is basically one provider and then they have a limited number of children. I'm not even going to express that number because I'm not quite?
Based upon toddlers and?
Based upon toddlers and infants. Then to be a group, you would have two providers or more and then you increase your number in infants and toddlers and children that you could have then. Then there are centers and centers are a very, they're very big, as you know, and we have several in the county.
It's over 60.
And they have rooms and they have lead teachers. They, they vary, just even with, from one center to the next, but those are just even larger numbers. Then there are, I just kind of drew a blank, but those are the three main top ones that we deal with most of the time in our county. There's other programs too. There are like school age, after-school programs that are being developed, you know, by the schools. So there's other types as well. Sorry, I couldn't go into exact numbers, but?
I just briefly, you know, for knowledge.
Sure, the charts and, and regulations are definitely available on our website if you want to look up, you know, the differences between each one.
What do you say, our website?
The RenoCountyGov.org.
Okay.
And then go to the Health Department and then?
And then childcare.
And then on the side, we've got child care's broken out now and you can look at that any topic for childcare, any licensing, any surveys, any flyers, all the resources are there or they can call the Health Department and we can help them.
Just wanted to make sure we said our?
Thank you, sorry.
So any other questions?
I apologize for asking the question because I think your Health Department annual review's been centered around childcare and I didn't mean that to be that way. I would like to make comment that when a new commissioner comes on, probably one of the least understood departments is the Health Department because you're involved in so many things. And my three and a half years of experience on the county is, it's amazing to me how much the Health Department does for the citizens of Reno County. And I believe that they do a very good job and I believe Carla Nichols has been a good addition to the Health Department. So I'm very pleased with what the Health Department's doing.
Sheriff, any other questions?
Just during my time and going through COVID and everything, I would say that I would second what Commissioner Sellers said, that it's been good to have communication and you've been very receptive and we've hassled things out and gone through and, and got an agreement on things and that goes with the whole Health Department.
Thank you, Sheriff. I don't think there's any other questions. Thank you, Carla.
Thank you. Oh, I wanted to mention, Mr. Chairman, that 34% of their budget is through grants by other agencies, so a significant part of their budget and people are financed by state and federal funds.
And on those completed projects, I listed all of our grants, so you guys can have those for reference also. Thank you.
Want to see if Commissioner's had any questions. This is the Health Department, Human Resources, IT, Maintenance, Public Works, Registered Deeds, Solid Waste, Treasurer, and then Use Services. One area that I'll point out that was another part of my comment is in Public Works, it was stated for the past couple of years, we've been working on moving forward with the Habit and Yoder sewer district improvements. And right before we were ready to start having the public meetings and start the financing prospect, we found out about the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center's proposed expansions. That's kind of, the state of Kansas would choose whether to fund that, but if they get that expansion, that's going to enlarge or add a lot of usage to the system in Habit. So we had to go back to our engineers, rework the number or the project, which means we now need to buy more land. So Dawn is in negotiations right now with the landowner to try to get enough space there at the Habit Lagoon system or site. So just so you know, we're still hoping to get the financing and the public meeting still this year, this summer, but we're kind of at a standstill because of land purchasing.
Is that the one that's fairly close to the City Hutch Sewer Plant?
No.
It's the other one?
This is down on the other side of the highway down in Habit. That's the water project, I think.
Old Navy Base?
How close is it to a developed sewer?
It's already been, that has already been talked about with the city.
Well, given the city's change of leadership, I think it's a question we should reopen.
That one may be difficult with the sewer, but the, the Yoder Water District issue that we're having, that one is relatively close to the city. That one may be more realistic to kind of?
This seems crazy when you have a giant facility like that and we're going to put a lagoon or something in a few miles away. And I know we're not talking same thing, but we ought to explore existing infrastructure.
I think even the cost was looked at with regard to that too at the time.
And where are we at with the cost study, the rate study?
The rate study that was done shows that for what we have without the financing and without a planned savings or reserve money, that our rates are covering our cost right now. Now, the rates for those two districts are the same today that they were in 1990. Costs have gone up and things have, we're still cover, able to cover that cost because those two districts, if you remember, also have taxes. So they're split, some people pay taxes, some people pay user fees and there are entities that don't, that are tax exempt. So they only pay the user fee and then there's others that may only pay taxes because they don't actually have a connection to the septic system.
I feel like, I feel like all of our, our water and sewer utilities are a little, like we need to kind of have a conversation about all of them.
Yeah.
Like some of them are underfunded, some of them need more work, some of them we want to maybe let, let, let the islands operate themselves, you know, whatever those are. Doesn't seem like we've got a, like I think we just need to deal with some of that stuff. It just feels like we keep kicking it down the road.
And what the holdup on the rates right now for Yoder and Habit, we don't know the true number of the project. Since we have that and how we're going to fund it, are we going to, I mean, we'll bond it, but is the payments going to be on the property tax side or the utility rate side, user fee side? So we're still having those conversations with our consultants.
I've been harping on this for a year and my point was, if we don't start collecting a more fair rate, it's just going to cost more in the future. Like they're getting charged less than $10 a month and we know there's substantial costs coming and yet we don't do anything about it.
I think, I know you've mentioned this before, but I think we thought we had, I think Public Works thought they had a pretty easy go and we'd be done with it by now and established it. And then when, when we learned KLET C was expanding so much and then that threw a whole new series into that part of it, but there's no reason why. So let one rate increase at one time.
Have you heard of paralysis of analysis or paralysis by analysis?
Yes, I know.
I think that's where we're at here. We're not doing anything. I know you're doing stuff behind the scenes.
We're doing work with the rates.
But we're not able to act.
Okay.
When do you think you could get some decisions?
For the rates or the project, we're still waiting to find out what the cost of the land's going to be. So as soon as we have that, we will get with you and bring something back, hopefully June or July. The rates, if you guys want to increase the rates, we can increase them, but right now we're covering cost. So we would need to know.
Every utility rate structure I've been involved with has a, has a capital account that you build up and I don't think we have one of those, do we?
We have a reserve, yes, but there's not much money. The Habit District has a little bit healthier, the Yoder District has virtually nothing for those two districts.
Can we, why don't we just make a first step, like rate increase, this is where it's at, we'll come back with another one later?
I'll work with Patrick on the resolution and, and then with Dawn on how much?
Maybe I'm the only one that thinks that way.
The one thing that's different, Commissioner Friesen, about these two districts is it's, they're a little more? they're a little more unclear because it is split between property tax and user fees. Most utility accounts are one. And it doesn't really specify what the property tax is covering, is it covering operating or capital, user fees, same thing, it's just?
You know my position on this.
You know mine, I want to be user fees, I want to be user fees.
Well, there you go, it's just, just like trash, right?
We agree?
Yeah, maybe so.
Maybe so? But, yeah, yeah.
Um, are you okay with that?
I'm, I'm not as concerned as you are about doing something at this point in time, but?
Well, why don't you bring something and if it gets voted down, it gets voted down.
I know when we did this sewer plant in South Hutchinson, we knew that we had to have so many gallons running through that to be able to pay for it. And, but we knew what our costs were going to be. We knew kind of where we wanted to be on reserve. So at that time, we started raising rates and then every two or three years, they were raised, but that was based upon knowledge of costs. And if we can have some, something back in thirty, sixty days or so, I'm not sure that...
Well, I, I really want to encourage you again to, to look at existing infrastructure and, and have a conversation again, whether it's the City of Hutch or City of South Hutch or whatever it is. Did we kind of stall, stall out here on your report? Were you halfway through?
I was.
Keep going.
All right. Um, just a quick update, the ARPA requests have been received, so we did get a few more since the last commission meeting when ARPA was discussed, the, the funds. I'm working on getting a summary of those on numbers, the total amounts, along with putting a packet together, hopefully for the June fourteenth meeting. I know there's been, some of the different entities have reached out to me wanting to know when that discussion's going to take place, so I'll also be working with Patrick on a possible, not for approval, but possible agreements, contracts, um, to have some of the entities that you've already specified will be receiving money. So that'll be June fourteenth, probably at the end of that meeting. The twenty twenty-three budgets, all the requests are in, those numbers are being put together by, I think, June fifteenth, we should have estimated valuations to kind of have a better picture of what the current requests are and how that would affect the mill levy and taxes for Reno County. So sometime in June, at a meeting in June, I'll bring that to the commission for the preliminary discussion. It may be the June fourteenth, um, maybe something, depending on how much you want to talk about that and how the ARPA discussion goes on the fourteenth, whether June twenty-first, if you have a special meeting to talk about ARPA and budgets, just kind of want to mention that as a possibility without making a decision today, that I'll talk with Commissioner, Chairman Friesen a little more in the next week or two about what's on the agenda for June fourteenth and how the ARPA requests are coming along with the budget, how the budget's looking. Those are the, that's my report, any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hurst? I just publicly want to recognize all those students in Reno County who, uh, took part in all the extra, what I would call extracurricular activities such as, uh, state contests, whether they were forensics or, or FFA or sports or whatever the, the, the extracurricular activity was, uh, they really excelled, a bunch, quite a few of them really excelled at the state level in the contest. And so I, uh, I would just like to say Reno County was well represented and did extremely well. So thanks for all the students, the young people who made an extra special effort in these contests and to try to even get there. So that's really all I have. Thank you, Commissioner.
The only thing I have is that Commissioner Hurst and I attended the, uh, May thirteenth, Friday, May thirteenth, uh, Peace Officer Memorial at the courthouse and, uh, Commissioner Hurst and I had a brief conversation about this before the meeting. I thought, uh, that was one of their best services that I've attended. The, the, uh, address by the gentleman from the state was very, very good and, and thought it was very worthwhile. Nothing else.
Um, just a small item for me, did, have we, um, had any improvement on the audio, the live audio feed, did we work on that yet?
We've looked at it, we've tested it on systems outside our network, we do not see a problem. There was another radio station that contacted IT and myself about how, when they had some interference, some adjustment, adjustments they made. I know that IT then sent that information to, um, Eagle Radio for them to consider, but I haven't heard from them if it's, if they still have problems with the live feed.
Okay, well, we'll go get an update.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, um, apologize to those waiting, um, we do have an executive session that shouldn't last longer than fifteen minutes, so I'm confident we'll start the discussion on, on our special, special, uh, meeting here at eleven. So, um, commissioners, if we could take, um, about a six, seven minute break, start back at ten forty-five and I'm going to make that motion now so we can, we can, uh, kill two birds with one stone here. Um, just a second.
So what you're going to do, we declare, you're going to declare recess until ten forty-five?
And, and, um, an executive session thereafter, so?
A study session will happen after that.
Yeah. So, um, I would make a motion to, uh, adjourn until ten forty-five, at which time we'll go into executive session until eleven AM to discuss the subject of matters protected by attorney-client privilege with the executive session justified by the need to discuss with the county counselor and county administrator subjects which would be deemed privileged by the attorney-client privilege with the county administrator, county counselor present. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Sellers discussion?
You read real well.
All right, I'll, uh, no call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.